I am principal at East Campus and we are joined by some of our team here at West Campus and district. I'll just introduce them in just a moment, but we just wanted to welcome you and let you know we're excited to share as much information as we can with you. And also take as many questions as we can throughout the evening. So as you have questions based on kind of what we're saying or questions that you'd like to ask. We'd ask that you actually put them in the chat. We'll do our best job to answer them throughout the evening via chat and then we'll take any other questions that maybe we haven't had a chance to answer. At the end. So again, thank you for joining us. I am Dominic Manola, the principal at East and I'd like to introduce Ms. Patricia Makashima, principal at West.
Hi, everybody. Good evening. Thank you so much for taking some time to join us tonight and hopefully you will find this helpful. And we hope to be able to see some of your kids soon. Have a great one.
We're also joined tonight by Dr. Nick Poljak, superintendent.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for being here tonight. Looking forward to chatting.
And then also from West, Mr. Jason Cummins and Mr. Andrew Sheros, assistant principals. Alright, so again, we'll all kind of work together to answer all the questions that you have that come in and we'll give you the best answer and most information that we have. What I'd like to do though is take a moment, I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen. And we'll go through kind of what our goal for this evening is. We'll talk about what we plan to cover. And then we'll kind of jump into it, but again, we're going to talk through our roadmap to reopening. What does it look like? Over the next couple of weeks as we roll back into our hybrid model, what does that mean for your family, for your students? As much information as we can possibly share. Just as a quick note too, if you happen to have attended any of the sessions this afternoon, it is the same information. So by all means, you are welcome to stay. But just in case you happen to be, it is the same information that we had shared earlier. So with that. What we're looking to discuss this evening is one, what is our shift to hybrid in-person learning look like? What does that mean for your student? What does that look like with the schedule? How do you opt in or out of that? And we'll talk more about that. We're going to look at the schedule and key dates and make sure you have all the information leading up to the start of in-person learning. We also want to talk about the ongoing supports. For us, most important is that our students and our families feel supported, connected, and that they have all the resources that they need. So we want to make sure that you know all those supports and that we've communicated those as clearly as possible. And then ultimately, we're trying to answer as many questions as we can as we jump into into this new model that we're hoping to get to very, very, very soon. So with that, I'm going to kind of skip ahead to. I'm all over the place. So we've started this year and as we started back in August, we talked about really three potential models that will be operating them. One would be remote learning and this is the model that we have been in all school year. We had tried back in October and November, we were hoping to get to our hybrid model, but unfortunately the numbers just did not cooperate. So we stayed in the remote setting. We're at a point now where we are now into tier one, the metrics are going in the correct direction. And we're feeling really optimistic that we'll be able to get to a point where we can roll into now our hybrid learning model, which we'll talk all about this evening in the hopes that sooner than later, we can get back to our modified on-campus. Kind of return to as much normalcy as possible. So tonight's going to focus all on what does this hybrid learning mean for your students? And so just to go over some key dates, about a week plus ago, Dr. Poljak, our superintendent, put out a communication to our communities. Laying these dates out, but essentially looking at how are we going to get to having our students back on campus. So starting last week, and this will continue. Moving forward, we reopened our open campus. So this is open to any student who would like to come to campus any day. For kind of a quiet study hall type environment. It's a quiet place to work. It's like a study hall. Students have access to that. We have adults there on staff, not necessarily in a supportive role, but there to help make sure everything is going okay. And we also provide meals for our students who are on campus. So that has started, that will resume and that's available any single day that we're in session for school. And even if your child is in school for an A or B day, which we'll talk about, they could still come on their alternate day to open campus. Starting Monday coming up, February 1st, we're going to have some of our special education and our English language level one students back on campus four days a week. Students who are in those programs would have received direct communication. I'll share more about what those programs are looking like in a moment. But those students will return on Monday along with our faculty returning back to building. For all other students, you will continue to work in the remote learning setting for the rest of this week and for all of next week. Then the week of February 8th, we're actually super excited to be welcoming our freshmen back to our in-person hybrid model. We spent a lot of time as a district talking about the importance of making sure that our freshmen had an opportunity to come to campus. Before the rest of their classmates, we know that kind of the transition to high school in general is tough and challenging and it can only imagine how much more challenging it will be coming off of the pandemic and never be in the building. And here we are rolling into February. So we wanted to provide this opportunity for freshmen to be on campus first. So during the week of freshman of February 8th, freshmen in the hybrid model will have two days of the week that they will be on campus. We'll share that schedule in a moment. It'll be a 50% model, A day or B day, and they'll happen twice that week. Additionally, we're going to be building in some orientation programs. Just to help our freshmen get acclimated and to be able to learn the building and to be able to learn our teams and how we can support them. And really ultimately, our goal is to make sure that they're feeling as connected as possible. Then looking ahead a little bit, the week of February 16th, which is the weekend, the week we come up for President's Day. All other students will also begin in our hybrid 50% model. So kind of as we take this week by week, starting Monday, it's some of our special education and some of our English language learners. The week of February 8th becomes now our freshman hybrid and then the week of February 16th becomes all students in our hybrid model. So that schedule kind of in a visual format is what we want to share here and please know, we will share out this information in multiple ways. We know there's an awful lot that we're going to be putting out there this evening. If you have questions, please ask them, but we'll share this, we'll make this public, but we wanted you to kind of have a visual calendar view. So the week of the 25th on the bottom here, that's where we're at. All students will be remote unless your child would like to come for open campus, which we'll talk about how to sign up in a moment. So this week, students all remain remote. We're going to jump ahead now and head into February, that week of February 1st. Students who are in our life, bridge, transition, or English language level one programs. Will return to class starting on February 1st. All other students would still remain virtual for that week. Again, families of students who are in these programs would have received direct communication already and also are being asked, will your child return to in-person learning? If we haven't heard from you, I know our office will be giving calls in the next day or so to just connect and make sure that we're all on the same page, but those. Our life, bridge, transition, and EL1 programs will return in person on Monday the 1st along with our faculty. And the way our schedule is built with A and B days, which we'll talk more about, you'll be in four days a week. So it'll be Monday, Tuesday. Wednesday, the 3rd will continue to be a remote day. So everyone will be in remote learning from home. And then back on campus Thursday and Friday. And again, any student can come to our open campus. We'll jump ahead now to the week of February 8th. This is the first time now we're going to have our freshmen on campus. So we'll continue with our students who are in life, bridge, transition. And English language level one will also be welcoming our freshman team A on Monday, the 8th. All other students, so sophomores, juniors, seniors, not in those programs or not in those programs will be still remote for that week. On Tuesday, the 9th, those students, but now we're freshmen B. On Wednesday, the 10th, we'll be back to our freshman A. Thursday, because we'll be holding parent-teacher conferences, will be a fully remote day on the 11th. And then on Friday, the 12th, we'll be back to our freshman B. All other students will be remote, but again, the option to come onto campus for open campus, is there any day that we're open for classes? Jumping ahead now, one more week, we're going to head into the week of the 15th. And this is now the week that all students will be returning to our hybrid 50% model. And following our A, B kind of breakdown, Tuesday, the 16th will be an A day. Wednesday, the 17th will be a B day. And then back to Thursday, the 18th being an A day and then Friday, the 19th being a B day. Since we have Monday off, we won't have that midweek break. So students will be in two of those four days that week. Then we go to the week of the 22nd and it kind of goes back to a normal week, if you will. Where Monday is an A day, Tuesday is a B day, Wednesday is fully remote for everyone. They will still have classes, but they will be taking place just like they are right now. And then Thursday, the 25th is an A day and then Friday, the 26th is a B day. You do not have to remember this. You do not have to write this down. This will all be available on the website. We will share this out and then each week ahead of the upcoming week. Both Ms. Makashima and myself out of our offices will share a communication that says, here's the week at a glance that you're going to be looking at ahead. So we'll continue to provide this information, but that is the general schedule moving forward. Before we jump into what house teams and locations mean, Ms. Makashima, anything you want to add or anyone from the team that we're missing? Okay.
You're all good. Thank you. Doing a great job.
Wonderful. Alright, thank you. Okay, so you've heard me talk a lot about this idea of teams and I've also alluded to this idea of learning location. But when we went back to building our schedule out, we actually built it around this 50% model. And so given. The pandemic that we're faced with and the amount of students or people that we can have in one place at a time. We decided what made most sense was to build a schedule in a way that it could flex between zero, everyone being fully remote. All the way up to 50% of the kids and even if all 50% of our students showed up, it would still limit the class sizes to somewhere around 14 or 15. Which we could space out safely in all of our classes. We could transport to and from school safely, provide meals to safely as well. So in building that schedule of 50%, what was really important was students had to be assigned to a team, either an A team or a B team. So we know that this is the day that our half of our kids in A will come and then this is the day that half of our kids who are B will come. But the second layer to that is we know some families are comfortable sending their kids back to school and we know other families maybe aren't as comfortable and that's okay. And so within these teams, we also have families who will decide to keep their student fully remote. And so we sent out a communication today, which I'll hit on in just a moment, but I wanted to go over this kind of grid key of explanation of what these means. So you're going to have a team and it's going to be A or B. You also then might have an E, which means every day. Along with A or B, you're also going to see possibly an R for remote. So if you, back in October, we actually asked you this question, intended to send your child back in, you would either be A, B, or E. If you decided you wanted to keep your child remote, you would be AR for remote, BR for remote. Or possibly add one more layer to it, medical. So whether you are, maybe the records for medical are not up to date or there's a medical. Issue that requires you to be remote, that's where the M would come from. And so. Again, you don't have to remember all this, but what this tells you is what selection your student currently has. If it is team A or team B, and if it's remote or not, there's also the medical piece and the everyday piece for those students and those programs. But what you do need to know is we sent a communication actually this morning around 10:00 or 11:00 AM to all families. And in that communication, there is a very big bold note right in the middle that says your student's current house team and learning location is. And that's where this comes in. So that note will tell you if your student is currently assigned to be coming in person or not, and then which day they would come in. You only have to do something if you'd like to make a change to that. If you are comfortable what the designation is, so if you selected remote and you'd like to keep your child fully remote, that is okay. You don't have to do anything. Likewise, if you had your child signed up to come in person and you're good with them coming in person, you don't have to do anything. It's only in a situation where you're planning to make a change to what was selected back in the fall, that we ask you to click on the link to submit the form. So you'll simply identify information about your student, you'll select what your option is, we will then code that in our system so that it'll update your child, your students, learning team. Again, that is a lot to digest. Am I saying that in any sort of confusing way? Any clarification? Okay, so biggest thing is today you got this communication. It told you what house team and learning location your student is. And if you want to make a change, you click on that form. If you did not get that form today, we'll put this up at the end. Feel free to reach out to either of our offices, either principal's office or assistant principal's office. And we will help you, we'll help identify it and ask if you want to make a change. But look for that via email. It came out about midday today. We'll also talk about what it means if you want to stay full or remote, even when students are in class in a moment. But we wanted to make sure that we spend some time talking about the team, which tells you which day of the week and then the location, which tells you if you're coming in or not. You also, if you want to find this on your own, you'll actually be able to through Home Access Center. If you click on across the top, there's five links. One that says registration. If you click on that towards the left, you'll see a, under demographic, it'll say house slash team. This will actually tell you which team and learning location is currently assigned to your student. Again, if you're good with that and you don't want to make any changes, you are set to go. If you'd like to make a change, you just have to click on the form that was shared earlier today. With that schedule, now let's look at the actual schedule during the day. And the biggest piece here is the schedule itself is not actually going to change. Classes will still be running at the same time they've been running since quarter two. And that'll be the same case on whether it's a hybrid day, whether it's a remote day, whether your child is in person, and that'll continue throughout the rest of the school year. And so there's a couple pieces to this, which you can see on your screen. One, if your child is in life, bridge or transition, they'll actually be to school a little bit earlier at 7:30. Otherwise, PE, health, and driver's ed, along with some senior recovery starts at 8 o'clock. PE, driver's ed and health, like it has been, will continue to be fully remote. For many reasons and along with the schedule we built, we can't have large groups of students. We can't use locker rooms. We can't have large groups of students in PE. So that will continue to be fully remote. And so that go takes place from 8 to 8:30 and then beginning at 8:30 is period one, that goes till 9:45. At 9:50 is period two, that goes to 11:05 and then at 11:10 is period three and that goes to 12:25. So the on-campus times for most of our students will be 8:30 to 12:25. At that point, students who are done with their classes for the day would then leave campus. They would take either the bus that's provided or they would take their transportation that they have. And teachers will be available from 12:25 to 1:00 to answer questions, to kind of be available for office hours as needed. Then starting at 1:00, we're having a variety of different supports that your student may or may not be enrolled in. This includes additional support for our English language students. This includes some credit recovery. Certain students are enrolled in a period eight class. And other students will have what we call extended learning opportunities. So always that we're looking to support your child. To make sure that they're staying on track with credits. Those will take place from 1:00 to 2:15. If your child happens to be on school or on campus those days, they will stay on campus until that and we'll have a bus run at that time. And then from 2:00 to 3:10 is office hours, just about every day of the week. Our teachers are available to to our students. Whether they want to meet individually, whether they want to meet in small groups, but they're available just to make sure that that students have all the support that they can, they can get. And so I would highly encourage you to work with your students, have them reach out to their teacher if they need any extra support, any extra help. This is the time in which they can get all of their teachers at any time. The day then ends at 3:10 and that's when clubs, activities, and athletics will begin, of course, dependent on state and IHSA guidelines. We'll talk a little bit about that. We're very excited because. We actually saw the return of some sports this week and then some of our actual extended learning opportunity courses will run at 8 o'clock PM. You would have gotten communication about this. You would know if your student was enrolled in this, but just wanted to go over kind of the full schedule once we return to hybrid learning. So whether we stay remote, whether your child's remote, whether you're in hybrid, this is the general schedule that you will be following. Okay, so outside of the schedule, outside of all those logistics, we do want to take some time to once again, share just some of the preventative measures. That we continue to have in place that we've had in place since the beginning to make sure that we're as safe as possible and ready to go. We have had indoor air quality consultants come through our buildings multiple times just to make sure that we're on track and everything is is safe. We have been using IDPH approved cleaning supplies for months and months and months. And our training for maintenance custodial has really been targeted towards preventative measures as they relate to COVID. In fact, many of our maintenance crew actually has a COVID cleaning certification to make sure that we're up to date with with all the practices and protocols. We are cleaning daily. We are cleaning then weekly. We are making sure that we have protocols in place to disinfect all the highly. Traffic areas, surfaces that are touched. We have thermometers throughout both buildings that are being used regularly for screening. Every classroom has a sanitizing station. You'll see them throughout the hallways. Every class has. IDPH approved or EPA approved cleaning products to make sure that our desks are all ready to go. We've got masks that for all students and staff, and if your student didn't receive one back in the summer, we'll be sure that they get one when they come in. Additionally, we have thermal cameras at both campuses, which are capable of screening up to 50 people at one time. To look for temperatures and if anyone's got a temperature that's slightly high, it'll actually show up as a different color. So we'll be able to. Identify that person and make sure that we can screen them a little bit further. There are visual cues. There are posters throughout both buildings that kind of talk about reminders and how you should be moving about the hall and how to use different spaces. Some of our hallways are going to be one-way. Please walk this way only. Other hallways will be kind of stayed to the right as if you were driving. In our common areas, as you can kind of see in this picture, we've got plexiglass up to make sure that we're protecting our staff and our visitors alike. And so. We continue to take this all very, very seriously and we're feeling very confident that when students and faculty return to our building, we'll still be in a really, really great place. As it relates to meals, we will continue to distribute meals as we've done every day since March 13th. To our community, to all individuals 18 and under for free, five days per week. Once we go to this 50% model, we'll also add that to school where kids who are on campus can take the food and go with them. As they're leaving campus. Just as an interesting note, today is the first day we actually did not do meals because of the snow. So we'll be offering double meals tomorrow for anyone who is able to get there, just to make up for for today's meal that we didn't, weren't able to distribute, but this is something that we will continue. We want to make sure that we're getting meeting the needs and as best we can of our community and our students. So I talked a lot about this idea of open campus, but just a couple pieces quickly to remind you, this is open to any student any day. So if your child is remote but wants to come in for open campus, they're welcome to. If your child is on team A, but it's a B day, your child can come into open campus. If your student just wants a kind of quiet, safe place to work, this is what we're here for any day. So the couple pieces is one, we will provide transportation to and from this. Via our bus routes and the times you can see listed, 7:15 in the morning and 7:50. So. Those students who might need to be there early for different classes or PE, or if they want to then arrive just for the start of their 8:30, there's those two routes. Additionally, then we'll depart campus right after class at 12:35, at 1:00 for additional time to meet with teachers and then also at 4:00 if you're staying for any of the extended. Day classes, period eight, etc. We will make sure that students are fed who are on campus, whether they're staying or going, we will make sure that they have a grab and go meal with them. And those students who come in, like any student or anybody who comes in will have wellness screening, entry procedures, temperature taken and masks. Everyone is wearing masks at all times in the building. People are spaced out six feet at least, if not more. So. This is something that we continue to make available. The one piece that we want to ask is that we require students to sign up by 12:00 PM the day before. Because our transportation uses that information to make sure that we're developing the routes to pick everyone up. So all you have to do is go to the Lyden homepage on the main banner or click on the community page and you'll see access to open campus and you can sign up for either campus. As I mentioned, transportation, anyone who would be taking transportation normally will continue to have transportation offered. Once we return to our hybrid model, we'll adjust our schedules to reflect that. We will communicate all those specifics out to our families as we get a little bit closer. In addition, we'll have. Transportation for clubs, for activities, for athletics that are after school. We want to make sure that students have the opportunity to engage as much as possible in class and also outside of the classroom. And so we'll continue to provide transportation to meet all those needs. A big piece, and I've talked about this quite a few times as well, is earlier this morning, late this morning, early afternoon, we launched our reopening survey and form. This has your child's house team and learning location and the option to change that. If you did not receive that, all you have to do and you'll have to kind of is reach out to either of our assistant principals or principal's office. And we'll be sure to work with you and walk you through that. We just asked that you update if you'd like to make a change by the end of this week. We'll have our teams then next week updating the system to make sure that everything is recorded accurately so that our teachers are ready to expect who will be in class and who will be remote. Before I do that, actually, Mr. Cummins, not to put you on the spot, but are you okay maybe talking through what? If I'm a student who's in hybrid and then someone else is remote, what that's kind of going to look like for our students?
Yeah, sure. Absolutely. So the students, the teachers are going to be basically teaching with to both groups of students at the same time. So if I'm an A day student and today's my day to be in person. I'm going to be in front of the teacher participating in all the class activities and the teacher is actually going to have a camera focused on them as well for the students who are. Who are home for that day, whether the student is. A B student who's a remote student, completely remote, they'll be in class remotely with all the students who are. Who chose to stay home fully remote. So that's kind of how it works on the opposite days. Now your child, like Principal Manola mentioned earlier. Still have the opportunity to come in to do open campus on the day that they're not assigned to come in person to teachers, to the class as well.
Okay, thank you. We appreciate that. So essentially, there's always going to be kids at home and there's always going to be some kids in class. And so whether your child is fully remote, whether they're A or B. They're not going to be singled out one way or another. There always will be kids kind of both in the remote setting and in the in-person setting. And our teachers are working really hard to kind of find that balance. We spent time at both of our faculty meetings just today. Talking about that and talking about some of the best practices and some of the things that we want to really make sure that we're hitting. So. We're expecting kind of a blend of all that, but know that if your child is remote or in person, they'll be getting that instruction both ways. So. Thank you for that clarification. One thing we want to jump into now to some of the co-curriculars. We're looking at currently a blend of both in-person and virtual meetings for our clubs and activities. So now that we're in tier one, tier two, and tier one. Our clubs and activities will meet on campus at least once a month, could be more, and then they'll also have some virtual meetings. So. Your students on a regular basis receive communications from our activities directors with information about what's running, how to get involved, who to contact. But at any given time, again, reach out to our offices if your children have any questions about any of this. Along with clubs and activities, as we mentioned, we're super excited because actually this is the first week in several that we have sports up and running again. And so some of our lower risk sports, which is girls badminton. Which actually got moved to the winter, which is typically a spring sport, but got moved to the winter with this year's kind of silly schedule. Girls bowling, girls gymnastics, competitive dance, competitive cheer, and boys swimming and diving. Those are all. They all got up and running with practices yesterday. Of course, today with the weather, of course, day two, they're on practice, but otherwise they're back up and running tomorrow. And you have the coaches listed there. If you have an interest in getting involved or looking ahead towards the spring. You can reach out to our athletic director, Mr. Mason, at any point, but likewise, we're always happy to answer any of these questions. We've gotten some questions also as it relates to some of the higher risk sports, specifically basketball. We're still awaiting guidance. But we're looking at the possibility of getting contact days up sooner than later. And once we get to phase four, there's a possibility of inter-scholastic competition as well. So. What seemed maybe a little bit more far off might be a little bit closer now. We will communicate as quickly as possible and as you can see at the bottom, and I know it's kind of hard to read. If you go to the athletic website, so lyden212.org and you click on athletics, you'll go right there and all the information you could possibly need about what's up and running, coaches, contact information, schedules is all right there. But any of the coaches are listed or let any of us know how we can help anytime. Okay, last couple notes and then we'll make sure that we're hitting questions. We are going to continue in our virtual model for parent-teacher conferences, both quarters three and four. We've gotten a lot of really positive feedback from our families that these are actually. Beneficial and you can make them a little bit easier perhaps over the virtual setting. So please save the date for both of these. Quarter three. Will be on February 11th and then quarter four will take place on April 20th. We will share much more information about how to sign up for those conferences about a week ahead of each of those dates. But if you want to mark down those dates, know that virtual conferences will be taking place. Additionally, to continue supporting your students, there are certain students. That we're going to hear from teachers and based on certain grades that we might reach out to and say, hey, we'd really love to schedule a conference with you. So we might reach out to you as well. But that said, please save those two dates and know the conferences will be coming right around the corner for quarter three. Just a couple last tips and something that continues to really be important for us. When we think about the remote setting and then we think about the hybrid setting and kind of finding that balance, there's a couple pieces we want to just continue to hit on. The expectations both for us and for you, for your student, is keeping high expectations, making sure we're engaged daily and really doing the best that we can. Attendance, whether it's remote, whether it's hybrid, making sure that your student shows up. There's nothing more important than being there so that they can engage and they can work with our teachers who are doing great work. Just as a reminder, something that I think hopefully everyone kind of continues to know, grades do count and grades do matter. Unlike last spring, when everyone kind of was sprung into this. Grades do matter. So we're doing lots of work with all of our teachers, all of our students, to make sure everyone is as supportive as possible, but continuing to reiterate that. We want to keep learning at the highest levels possible. We want to collaborate. We want to ask questions. Take advantage of office hours like we mentioned earlier, really pushing our students to meet with our teachers as much as they possibly can. Because ultimately, that's what leads to engagement, having our cameras on and making sure we're raising our hand and chatting with our teachers. The more engaged our students are, the more successful everyone's going to be overall. And most important to all this, and I would say the same to all of our families and our community and our staff, self-care. Taking care of yourself. How are you connecting with one another? How are you taking breaks? How are you making sure that you're exercising and stepping away? So these are some kind of key areas of focus for our faculty, for our staff and for our students, and we thought it was important to share. So that is 30 minutes of a great deal of information, probably overwhelming at points. Know that we will continue to share so much more. But first, I'd like to ask the team if there's anything else we're missing or they want to cover. And then I know the chat has probably been going back and forth quite a bit, but then we'll look at. Any more questions we can address. We've got a little more time. We'll do a session at 7:00 for families who speak Polish, but otherwise. Any more questions we can address, we've got a little more time, we'll do a session at seven for families who speak Polish, but otherwise. Anyone from the team, are we missing anything that you'd like to add before we jump into the chat?
Andrew has been doing a great job in answering these questions, we appreciate it. I think the last question here, Andrew, I don't know if you're typing it up, but it's a how will band work?
How will band work?
Band, yes, oh, there he is, he just answered.
Perfect, okay, so Mr. Sheros, thank you for talking about that. And so the biggest piece is bands going to be similar. In regards to how it's been working kind of remotely at this point, it's just band and choir likewise. They're really, they're challenging because of the amount of. Air that you're you're using, whether you're singing or playing the instrument. As Mr. Sheros kind of mentioned here, there's a lot more room in those spaces, but it's just a little bit different than others. So there may be some very spaced out individual practicing happening. But ultimately, the work that's going to happen in the classroom is probably going to be a lot more theory. And then the work at home is going to be the individual based, probably practicing, recording. And if you have a child who's been in band or choir, you know that they're using smart music. So a lot of their recordings, a lot of their assessment go through playing into a digital platform, which the teachers have access to. And then they can kind of assess that way. But nonetheless, we'll continue to figure out what we can do most safely when it comes to band and choir. And so again, Mr. Sheros, thank you for keeping up with with all of the chat. Are there other questions that we? Have not hit on or that we should reiterate?
I think you covered, I think you did a pretty good job in covering, yeah, so thank you.
All right, so and with that again, we'll keep, we'll keep the the chat open, we'll keep the meeting open. For those of you who would like to feel free to to end for the evening, but we'll stay on and make sure that we answer any questions that you might have. Probably most importantly, just know that we're here to help whatever you might need. So I'm going to share my screen one more time. And I'm going to put up some contact information. So if you'd like to copy this down, there's kind of the information for Dr. Pollock and Dr. Mahoney in our district office. Ms. Makashima and myself, and then Ms. Gaddis, who is our communications director. If you really, if you want to start with Ms. Makashima and myself, we'll be sure to direct it wherever it might need to go. But you know, to speak for Dr. Pollock, you know, he's always available and willing. Dr. Mahoney, who was unable to join us tonight, is our assistant superintendent for student services and special education. So he helps oversee all those programs and work with everyone there. And then Ms. Gaddis is our new communications director, so you'll start to get to know her as you'll hear more and more from her in the coming days. But we'll leave this up, we'll make sure that we take any questions that we have via chat and happy to go from there. But thanks again, everyone for joining us and we'll stick around for a little bit longer. All right, question just popped up. Start time for in-person is eight thirty, correct? So unless you have a special program that's had special communication to you, period one starts at eight thirty. Because PE class would start today, it would be asynchronous, meaning you would do the work on your own throughout the day. So eight thirty is the in-person start time.
I think the question is about the time that crisis go will be sent to parents.
Got it, I think it was was at the same time.
Early in the morning, yeah, very early in the morning, I think five.
I think by five thirty it should be said, because I know I know our faculty and staff get it by five thirty, so I would imagine it'll be the same, five, okay.
So I think the the question about freshman orientation.
Yeah, so in our A B model, the week of the eighth, we're looking at how to best provide orientation, of course, safely and spaced out. For our freshman students, so there will be along with classes, orientation built in. We will communicate what that looks like by early next week, so that everyone has some time to plan. Some questions around PE class, so PE class is at eight, but it's not live. There may be opportunities where the teacher will ask students who aren't in person to to do it virtually live. But it is still a remote class across the entire semester. So even though it's on the schedule from eight to eight thirty, that's the one day that they'll be actually live is the day that we're fully remote when students don't have to commute to campus. And again, there there is absolutely no rush, we will stick around, but if you are feeling like you had your questions answered. Feel free to enjoy your evening, feel free to ask any questions otherwise. But again, I think on behalf of the whole team, we'd just like to say we appreciate our partnership. We appreciate the collaboration and you taking the time to join us. Again, we'll stick around and answer questions, but have a wonderful evening. Happy, happy Tuesday and hopefully your shoveling is complete so you can relax for the evening.
Thank you, Dr. Manola, for for taking the lead on this one.
Absolutely. All right, well, good evening, everyone, thank you again.
I think the confusion, so maybe you want to just explain the PE thing again. When they are in person, so I'll try to explain just briefly when they are, and Andrew, and I know you've been trying to go back and chat. But if a student is in person, that means that. PE is going to be asynchronous, meaning that the work will be done on their own without a teacher. When students are fully remote, either that Wednesday or the Thursday. That's when they will have a live session with our with the PE teachers. So for four days a week, those sessions are asynchronous, meaning that they're not necessarily a live session with the PE teacher. Only it's once a week when we are back to in-person. Maybe some, I hope that I was able to clarify. So even if a student is going in person, that student will have PE work, but it doesn't have to be completed from eight to eight thirty. So the 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 issue with health classes, the health classes are the ones that we are asking students to be. If they are in person, they can arrive earlier at the buildings. So they can be in a location to go to the live session. At the building and then go to their first period class. So if your child has health or P or freshman driver's ed. They can take a transportation, they should be in the building before eight o'clock, we'll allow them in. They'll have a location to sit and can and do their half hour of health or a driver's ed. And then they'll be going to their first period class.
And I know in talking with some of our health teachers, they're also going to try to target if it's an A day, keeping the B students for live. And then switch those for the other days to try to give people a chance to travel to. Question is what location will that be? So both campuses at our open campus location, so East Campus, it's the mezzanine and at West, it's the commons. That's where students will go when they arrive on campus prior to class, if they're going to do either open campus or their class there. There will not be, good question here, there will not actually be lockers assigned, so students will not have lockers. For a lot of reasons, we just don't need extra materials and extra places to be putting stuff, so there will be no lockers. We know that with some coats that might be a little bit bulky for the for the month or two that we're coming. We are asking students to bring everything with them every day and we're not going to be having lockers this year. All right. Well, again, I will, I will one more time put up our contact information. Feel free to reach out to us at any moment. But I think we will go ahead and just answer the last couple of questions, we'll wrap up for the evening. And in the coming coming weeks, we'll see some of our students and more and more students on campus, let us know what you need, but other. Was I muted?
I think you're muted.
I was muted, perfect. I said, yeah, I think at this point, I'll go ahead and share a contact information one more time. We'll answer the last couple of questions, but please feel free to reach out to us anytime. But I think we'll head and wrap up the meeting for the evening, so have a fantastic Tuesday. If you need anything, let us know, otherwise we'll see some of your students soon, hopefully more of your students in the coming weeks. And we'll we'll keep looking up, so have a great day, thanks so much for joining us, thanks to our team for all your work and we'll see everyone soon.
Have a good night, everybody.
All right, Ms. Makashima, I will meet you over on the other side in about fifteen minutes. Are you, do you have a PC to pull up the PowerPoint?
You you want me to?
Would you be okay running the slides just because?
Oh, yeah, sure.
My Mac doesn't have PowerPoint, so I don't have that, so.
Oh, no problem, yes, yes, okay, got it, okay.
I will see you over there.
Dr. Manola, did you see, Dom, did you see the last question that just came in?
Right now? Oh, supplies. Perfect, you know what, and actually I think that person is still here. So the only supplies that you would actually need would really be your child's Chromebook. And then perhaps pen and paper, teachers will let you know specifically, if your student happens to be in any. Hands-on type classes, maybe an art class, maybe industrial tech class. Those classes will have already probably gotten the materials out, but we'll communicate with you directly. But if you have any questions, I would just reach out to the teachers directly, but by all means, our assistant principal's office can help you answer that question as well. But really, there's no. No list of supplies that you need other than your Chromebook and maybe something to write with. And so the question also here is my student will be in person to see the teacher be in front of a computer. So not necessarily, and there's going to be kind of a balance to this, there will be moments where. A teacher will say, we're all going to be on a Zoom together, some kids will be in class, some kids will be at home. There also will be moments where the teacher will say for the students at home, work on this, watch this, read this, work together in small groups virtually. And then for the students in class, we're going to work on something up here together. I imagine most classes will start out everyone together, as the teacher kind of provides direction for the day. But we're really working with our teachers to make sure that it's not just sit here and and do a a Google meet from the classroom. So while there'll be some of that, our hands-on classes, our lab classes, there'll be lots of opportunities for our teachers to. Do things with the students who are in class and the students who are at home might be doing something slightly different. And then they'll slot that for the next day when the B kids switch out with the A kids. All right, any last questions, we're happy to answer them. Again, otherwise have a fantastic evening. Let us know what we can help with. All right, I think with that, Ms. Makashima, I will go ahead and end the meeting and we will jump into our next one.
All right, sounds good, yeah, just getting the Polish ready. All right, thank you, have a good night, everybody.
Bye, everyone.